Hey, welcome everybody to this special safe distance edition of the Alex Thomas Show. It is my honor to have the honorable Justin Hodge running for District Five Commissioner's seat on the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you for having me. It's an honor to be here.
It's a real pleasure, especially in these times that we're in right now, just to see people in the community, leaders. I know I've seen some Facebook posts with you doing some things in West Willow and Sugarbrook. So to give the chance to like, to give people an opportunity to see the person behind the mask that was out there doing.
Oh, right.
And also just to let them know about yourself, why don't you go ahead to give them, to give the people an opportunity to find out about you. In this time, one of our leaders, it's a, it's an honor for me and I'm really glad to have that opportunity and that's what we're going to try to do.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. It's campaigning and COVID is a real challenge. I mean, I can get out there and pass on supplies, but I'm not doing that to campaign. I'm just out there so people will know it's me behind the mask. It's harder to connect with voters because normally at this point, like the weather is so nice, I'd be going out there, going door to door and talking to people. But all of it has to be digital now, which is a, it's a challenge. But I'll tell you a little bit about myself and then what I'm hoping to do as county commissioner. So my name is Justin Hodge. I run for Washington County Commissioner, District Five. And I'm running because I believe that everybody across our county should have the opportunity to be healthy, to build wealth and to be safe. No matter where you live in the county, you should have access to quality and affordable healthcare. And you should be able to get it without transportation being a barrier. Should be able to get a good job no matter where you live in the county, so you can provide for yourself and your loved ones. Or purchase a home if that's what you want to do, or a condo, or whatever you want. And you should be safe no matter where you are. Your zip code should not determine the opportunities that are available to you. So that's what I'm working on in the kind of county that I envision.
You know, I saw your campaign announcement speech and you, and you went over some of those same things. And that, to be frank, is when I started to change because I hadn't, I've only heard about you in, in like, out in the community. And, uh, you know, there's lots of lies and misperceptions. And the things that I, that I heard, that made me really suspicious of you and that, but seeing that announcement made me want to reach out to you. And full disclosure, audience, I'm endorsing Justin. And it was from like seeing that announcement, seeing him talk about those health inequities, something that I haven't seen a lot of leaders talk about prior to COVID. Seeing that, finding out, and you didn't even mention you're a professor in the School of Social Work at University of Michigan. But I met him in his office and we had a good chat and I found out that there was a lot of lies and misperceptions. And the guy's real and he really cares, a experienced record in these issues. He's informed and at a time like this within COVID, it really calls out how we need leaders. So I'm, I'm excited to support you and I can't wait to talk about, you know, all of those, those health inequities, your background, everything. So, yeah.
I appreciate you saying, I appreciate you saying that. I mean, part of the challenge of politics is that there's always going to be some amount of misinformation. People are in it for different reasons and like my background is in social work. So as you mentioned, I'm a professor at the University of Michigan School of Social Work. Relatively new in that role. I'm just finishing up my second year there. But my entire career has been in public service. So I used to work for a community mental health system, providing child and family therapy. I used to do home-based work, so I would go to people's homes or meet people, kids and families in schools or McDonald's or wherever in the community, so we could do therapy there. And we did that home-based program, so it's easier for people to be able to get services that may have transportation issues. So I did that for a while and then eventually transitioned into doing crisis intervention work. So I was doing a lot of work with suicidal teens and kids that were at risk for either being hospitalized or were just discharged from the hospital, so trying to keep them from having to go back.
And that was all in Washington County?
So a lot of that work I did in Ingham County and in Washington County. So in Washington County, a lot of my work has been with the Ypsilanti Health Center when I was still practicing clinical social work and with Michigan Medicine. So Ypsilanti Health Center, if people that aren't aware, it's, it's in Ypsilanti. And the purpose, one of the program that I worked with, the purpose is to make it people's medical home. And by that, it's, you could just, you go to this one location where you can get your physical healthcare, you can get your mental healthcare, you can get everything there. And I was one of the few black therapists that they, that in the county, which I mean, makes it challenging because there are a lot of, you know, people that need the therapy and with so few black therapists, it's harder to connect with those people that need that service. So I was really happy to be able to work at Ypsilanti Health Center for the time that I was there and to work with a lot of people that are right in our community.
And is that still operating right here? I'm, Ypsilanti Health Center. Because I, I definitely have to put those links up that, you know, there's, I've been in the community a long time. I've always learned it about new places. I know about Hope Clinic and Packard Health and our health plan. But man, I, I, I'm happy and so glad you mentioned that. That's, that's a incredible need in our community and I know that there's an organization out there.
Yeah, I love Ypsilanti Health Center. I go there for my own primary care.
Okay, cool. I will definitely throw that out there. Hey, um, those lies and misperceptions, like you're some kind of newcomer or whatever. You did undergrad here and it.
I did undergrad and grad school here. Yep. And my wife and I lived pure in Sugarbrook. So we've got a 10-year relationship with the county.
Yeah. So what, what did you, what was your undergrad?
My undergrad is in psychology and Japanese studies and then my graduate degrees in social work.
Okay. And to back up a little bit more, where did you grow up at? Where did you come before you came here over 10 years ago?
I grew up in Lansing, Michigan.
Okay. Um, uh, so specifically, what's, would you say like working class neighborhood or?
Oh, yeah. We don't got, right? I still don't got much money. We don't have much money. I didn't grow up with much money. Uh, yeah.
Okay. Well, you know, for some reason, I don't know, I think I told you when I met you, I had this idea that you went from Flint and that you grew up in like, in the, in the wealthy suburb of Flint.
Not us. No, not you, my family. No.
You disabusing that. Lansing, working, like what are siblings, parents work?
I don't have any, I don't have any siblings. My father works. My mother does a lot of volunteering work for the National Kidney Foundation. And so they're a single income family. I've been working really hard to try to get them to move out here just to, I mean, have them closer. But I mean, COVID has made that more challenging. My dad was in the process of applying for jobs out here, but that's been made more difficult. And I mean, just like most people that are hit with COVID, I mean, the situation's made it harder with his job and people have been decreasing hours. There's always the fear that they would have to shut down. So, yeah, money is a very big concern for me and, I mean, growing up it was and it still is. I'm trying to just make sure my family's taken care of.
High school extracurricular, extracurricular activities in high school programs, sports?
Uh, yes. When I was going to Sexton High School, so for anybody that knows Lansing area, I did about one year of tennis. But a lot of my other work, I mean, extracurricular work was like National Honor Society and a lot of Japanese work. So I put my undergrads in Japanese studies and I had been oddly enough, like we had that in the Lansing School District at the time. And that's what I spent a lot of my time on outside of studying and, yeah, school.
No, we both have, you know, have that, you know, kind of outside connection with Asia. I'd be interested to hear like, how did, because my, I spent eight years in China. You know, we, we, we've talked about so much, we haven't got a chance to.
Yeah, we never get to that. We don't get to that. Yeah.
But I'm curious, how did Japanese studies come on, come onto your map and what led you?
It's, it's wild when we think about how like, I was always in underfunded public schools. So when I was in middle school and you have to take a foreign language, Japanese was one of the options. And I mean, it was just like compared to the other options, like, wow, that's different. So I ended up taking it there when I was in middle school. And then we had a, Michigan has a sister city program with various prefectures in Japan. So where in middle school, they had a program, they don't have this anymore. And I think I was the last cohort to go, but I got to go to Japan for a couple of weeks and then later Japanese students came to the United States and you can stay with a family. So having that experience in middle school just really kept me going with it. So I mean, I continued studying it in high school and then in college too. And then I know you, your time in China, you taught English, right? You spent some time doing that?
I, I taught English, but it's like, I came later in life. I was in my late 30s and just in this area that economic, uh, just the economic situation, and I always say wanting to have a life. You know, I was just felt stuck in the job that I was in and was just looking at the world and China just seemed like, well, it was, it was such a dynamic economy. Really culturally, you know, you get to flip the script and get out of Western and, you know, it's mainland, you know? So it was just all the variety of things, but the biggest factor was just the economic situation here and wanting to have more opportunities that brought me, yeah. So, um, what was your first foray into politics in the political world?
You know, so people always ask about, why are you in politics? And I know people have certain perceptions about politics, but really what brought me to get focused on politics was social work, my social work background. So in social workers, that people tend to think of as only as therapists, but you have to learn a wide variety of skills as a social worker. So you get skills in community organizing, management, policy and program evaluation as well as clinical work. But taking my introduction to policy class as a social worker is really what opened my eyes up to the government and policy being a vehicle for positive social change. And prior to me working at Community Mental Health in Ingham County, I've been doing some paraprofessional work there and I did my social work internship there. So once I started working there, I was working there during the time when Governor Snyder and the Republican Legislature slashed the budgets to CMH, which was devastating and we're still feeling those effects now because it hasn't been reversed. And the result of that was that we had to discharge, at my CMH, we had to discharge all patients that did not have Medicaid. And it had to happen so quickly that frequently it was done without like a solid transition plan, which is just horrible. I mean, nobody goes into doing clinical practice and plans to terminate patient relationships like that. It's just, but it was what had to happen because of the state's actions. And that got me looking at, okay, there are these people in these positions of power that don't, I mean, they're, they just care about money. And they don't know the impact of the actions that they're, that they're taking. So that got me looking at getting more engaged in politics.
You know, what's interesting about that, I, I've always been interested in politics on a national, global level. It wasn't until coming back from China in 2016 and really looking at this community and paying attention to the local. And it's, oh my God, I can't believe how much that I miss and local township and county. But in that, in the past four years, it seems like so many of, the root of so many of the issues is funding, money, i.e. at the state level. At the state and I, and it just, I've gotten so much more of appreciation for, yeah, it's really important to be engaged at all levels, especially starting locally, your township and county. But you need that so you can advocate stronger at the state level. And that's, is that something that you've seen or, you know?
Yeah, my focus, and this is always what I teach my students, because people tend to, when they think about politics, they look at national government. And what's going on? What did Trump say now? You turn to CNN or your news media of choice, just to see what's going on there. But my focus has always been on local and state politics, because those are the kinds of things that have an impact on your life on a day-to-day basis. Why am I so interested in county commission as a vehicle for social change? Well, one of the major reasons is because I've done so much work at the county level and I know what those services look like. And I know the kind of impact that they can have on people's lives. And looking at, in my example about CMH, when Governor Snyder slashed the budget there, a lot of those hard decisions that had to be made, had to be made across the state by county commissioners, because county commissioners across the state, because CMH is a county-level service. They are deeply involved in that and just determining the budget. So when your budget is getting cut and you have to make really hard decisions, just like our CMH here in Washington County has had to do. You want people at the table that know what's going on. Like you want people that have worked for those kinds of systems and understand how they work.
Yeah. And you know, just for the audience, the seat that you're running for is currently occupied by Ruth Ann Jamnik. And, uh, you know, I, I came to this area as a seven-year-old in 1976. She was in politics then, or actually she was in office then. She actually entered Ypsilanti Township Government at administrative level in the early 60s. So she's, and she's had a variety of positions. That District Five, it represents half of West Willow, my neighborhood. People can look on the map and you know, you're all familiar. I'm just giving, and I know you're definitely clear. Yeah. But a lot of people don't know like West Willow, our largest neighborhood in Ypsilanti Township. It's split into two county commissions, split into two school districts. Those jurisdictional boundaries really, they cut across and weaken the ability to impact so many of the issues that affect it as a whole. And that's what I, it just makes it so important for us to get someone knowledgeable and a strong advocate for these issues that affect us. And I, I want to go into COVID and what COVID has, the COVID-19 virus has really highlighted the health inequities and disparities. And I mean, I just think we're so fortunate to have someone with a background in social work. Someone just very familiar with the county-state network structure on how to affect those issues locally. So it's really, it was like with deep thought, like figuring like who to support, you know? I've added, looking at you, I think the record is clear. I can't believe in some other circus, some people are saying there's other qualified candidates. But I invite the audience to really look hard and look at the record and think about where we're at. But, but saying that, uh, my little spiel, those health inequities in this area, you know? How do you think we go about attacking them post-COVID or immediately and post-COVID? Considering like, you know, what, how it's highlighted those inequities?
Yeah, I mean, so something for us to think about with the health inequities is that it's not new. And when you came across my video online and my other campaign material, you saw that this, that was before COVID. Like I had been talking about these health inequities for years. So I ran for county commissioner for this seat against Ruth Ann Jamnik in 2018. I'm, I'm very proud of the work in her public service over the last several decades. But I saw, I mean, I, more work needed to be done to address these issues that are facing our communities. So COVID aside, there are so many other health and wealth inequities that are facing Ypsilanti Township. And Augusta Township is also part of this district. I mean, if you just look at life expectancy, for example, life expectancy in Ypsilanti Township and Augusta Township is six years less than someone, for someone living in Ann Arbor, which is ridiculous. I mean, why, why, why would it be that way? And if you look countywide, life expectancy for African-Americans is 10 years less compared to their white neighbors. And 16 years less for Latina and Latino residents. I mean, these are longstanding health inequities that should, something should have been being done about them for a lot longer than COVID. But I mean, COVID has really shined a spotlight on it and now everybody is talking about it.
Man, you know, you make it great to be a host, to have a professor at the School of Social Work. Or I'll have to dig back because I was, I was ready for the 13-year stat, that 13-year life expectancy differential. I mean, that usually grabs people, but I really, I want to sit back. You know, I'm on a Community Voices for Health Equity team with the Health Department. So these issues, I've, that's, I've been paying attention to the last couple of years. And what's really been imprinted on my mind and like what I want to tell everyone about are the social determinants of health and how they relate. And if you could put on your professor hat and educate our audience, myself, you know, what, what are social determinants of health and why are they so important?
So when you think about social determinants of health, you're thinking about the things that are in our community that maybe you don't necessarily think affect health, but they do. Like how close do you live to a grocery store, for example? What does the air quality look like? Where's your nearest healthcare provider? These are all social and economic things that will affect your life and your health. So that's what's referred to by social determinants of health. And in Ypsilanti Township and Augusta Township, there are a lot of challenges that we need to overcome. If we look at the Galt Village Shopping Center, for example. We need to do something about that as soon as possible, such as putting a grocery store or some other method, if not there somewhere, for people to be able to get food, healthy food. A lot of people in Ypsilanti Township, particularly, I live in Sugarbrook. So I live in 48198 and right next to 48197, so the two zip codes that have been hardest hit by COVID in our county. So for many people, you have to drive 10 to 15 minutes to get to a grocery store. Of course, that's going to have an impact on your health. If the closest food you could access is unhealthy and you have challenges with transportation, you're going to eat unhealthy food. Yeah, I mean, you really don't have any other option. So we need to address some, some of those kinds of issues, which will both help our economy, but also help people be healthier.
Thank you, thank you. And you, when you mentioned Galt Village, I'm so happy because so often when people see things like this, they don't see anything that like relates directly to their neighborhood. Galt Village is going to resonate and it makes, within Galt Village, like I think a lot of, well, within this community, people are familiar with Galt Village. They'll look at it as an eyesore, an example of inefficiency in government and neglectful owners and things. And I just, uh, if people just do a little Googling and look, there's a narrative, there's new owners to that. The current owners are not responsible for that history. They're actually trying to, now, you know, there's not enough time in the day. But it needs to be addressed by people seriously concerned and not just wanting to talk. To me, it seems like there's some partners there that want to, that want to work with the community, work with leaders. And they're not the ones that are responsible for it in its present, present condition right now. So I just want to point that out because it is such a key point in the community and so much opportunity there if people know the real story. So go ahead, Google Galt Village, look at that history on that and, and make some calls. Me too.
The other thing to think about too is, yeah, there's animosity there with how that situation went down, but we can't let that stop us from moving forward. I mean, while we wait and do nothing, people continue to suffer.
Well, yeah, but if you're going to hold animus, focus is in the right spot. Research it instead of just, you know, oh, they're selling us out and then find out what you're talking about. And enlighten everybody else too. You know, there's, you know, there's a reason for anger at, at times, but you got to focus it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. You know, with the, back to the social determinants of health, something that really grabbed my attention early on and it was hearing that a high school diploma was a better indicator of long-term health outcomes than access to services. Yeah, that really, not to minimize access to services, but the, from the data, you know, if you can ensure that, you know, that people are getting a high school diploma, if you can ensure that they have good eye treatment or, you know, if they have glasses early on. All these other key things that, like you said, don't, might not immediately link directly to health in one's mind, but they're instrumental.
Well, so then that's exactly why, to take it back to what I mentioned about the Ypsilanti Health Center, why that is so important for our community. I mean, the goal there is you could get all of your medical care there. So it just makes it easier for you to get access to everything that you would need in one spot. I mean, if you know to go to this one place, your medical home to get services, you're going to be more likely to go get your services. You'll be more likely to get your annual checkup by your PCP. And it also helps reduce reliance on urgent care too.
And man, it's great to have a professor. Because, uh, you know, I just show how much I don't want to minimize access, but I still hope with that high school diploma. But access, no, I think in the layperson's mind, they typically might feel like how close you are to services. And that's, you know, the geography of it. And I think that, you know, when we come from a social work, public health point of view, you know, access is a, is a bit more complex than that. So what, what does it mean in that context in the public health standpoint? What are public health professionals when they mean access?
So they mean both like the financial access to it, but also proximity and whether or not you like have, take the steps to get it. And there are a variety of things that will affect your ability to do that. So taking it back to my platform, which was obviously developed before COVID and why I focus on health, wealth and safety of our communities. Those are all things that are going to impact your overall well-being. We, you just mentioned about the statistic about the high school diploma. That's why one of the projects in my capacity at the university that me and my colleagues have been working on with the county for more than a year now is to get, to get a children's savings account program started. So children's savings account programs are asset development accounts, the, with the purpose being that ideally you want to hit a whole county or a large municipality or a whole state. We're working to create this in Washington County where all kids that start kindergarten would get a college savings account. So the research on this shows that even if there's only a little bit of money in that account, by the time the kid graduates from college, they are about four times more likely to go on to post-secondary education. And I mean, we know the health outcomes for completing high school and we know the health outcomes for going on to college or some other form of post-secondary education. So the idea with these children's savings accounts is that we would get some sort of small, depending on some kind of small donation, maybe publicly, and then seek larger private donations. Our hope right now is to get this program started where anybody that gets free or reduced lunch, which would be basically all kids in the Ypsilanti area, would get $500 to seed the account. That's the hope. And then people, other people, like so maybe kids in Ann Arbor would get a much smaller seed. And then we would get other private donations to add on to those accounts and they would be linked to different behaviors that would improve overall well-being.
Absolutely, man. No, but that's, uh, well, I really, I can't wait to hop on the Ypsilanti Health Center and, and check it out. Yeah, because it's been a blind spot for me and that's such an awesome program. You know, with, with health inequity, you, I've been looking really within the county at three particular areas. First, first off, maternal health and zero to three. Then also housing and returning citizens. So, you know, we have time, just starting with maternal health or, or those are my three categories, like.
Let's hit them. Let's hit these categories. I mean, when we think about maternal health.
I wanted you to critique it, but yeah, we'll hit those. Go ahead, go for it.
Well, maternal health and early childhood education and services for young kids is especially needed right now. I mean, the research shows that having those kinds of health services and then those other kinds of supportive services early in life improves outcomes dramatically. So, yeah, I would be in favor of the county committing more support to maternal health and, and early childhood.
I always, what I find is helpful in my strategizing is putting on the devil's advocate hat. And I think of what does, you know, the, the greedy insensitive Republican, what would they hate? And what would they respond to? And when I think about housing, you know, I, I think of that reaction being, oh, housing's everything. They just, how are they going to raise my taxes? You know, they're going to, so recognizing it, I mean, that's one extreme that's out there that, that descriptor that I gave. But there's a lot of just concerned people because they have limited budgets. They, you know, they know about inefficiency in government and they're just really suspect when you start talking, linking health and housing. But it is so crucial and so I really want to, yeah, let's, on housing, how can, how does housing affect health inequities?
Yeah, well, just from a philosophical, to counter the devil's advocates argument, this is something I talk a lot about in my classes because I, I teach graduate-level policy classes. I mean, that's my focus here. And what we see is that people are much less likely to support policies, our elected officials, to promote policies that are preventative in nature, like to prevent a certain problem. But we know that the research shows that prevention is way cheaper and way more effective than combating a problem after the fact. So that's the kind of policy that we tend to get are trying to combat problems after the fact, but that just keeps us spinning. And that ends up being more expensive. So we need to, but the challenge and why that happens is that frequently elected officials are worried about getting reelected. And it's harder to spin an argument about, oh, hey, I want to commit public funds to solve this problem or prevent this problem from happening. Then you use the funds, it's harder to see the impact or convince the public that there has been an impact. So when that elected official is running for reelection, they can't point out, they say, well, hey, elect me again because this thing I put money towards, it'll work out later. Like that's, that's not effective. So that's why we get elected officials that tend to focus more on the present instead of future-focused solutions.
And you know, um, that, that brings me to, uh, the, why I'm so happy to have you here and get, uh, you know, a discussion about these issues happening locally that you don't see in this media void that we have. You know, we have such limited media and such limited information. Growing up here, there was an Ypsilanti press and that's what I grew up with. And, you know, there was a narrative that everyone was on that, you know, it was informed and you knew what was going on. We don't have that now and it, it makes me think of, there was a story, um, a couple of years ago on NPR about cities of a certain size or metro areas of a certain size that lost their local newspaper. And they did a study and what they show, two key things they showed was higher incidences, higher incidences of corruption. And also an increased interest rate on the bond rating, which could translate into millions of dollars, you know? So looking at, in this local context, we might not, uh, uh, well, we see nefarious dealings in, in politics all the time here locally. And we have a recent case, especially locally here in Ypsilanti Township. But, um, we do definitely, uh, we also, uh, we also, uh, if we don't, if we don't have, uh, we don't have a bond, but we, there's a tax. There's a tax in that misinformation that's, that's out, or that void in information and that not knowing the narrative and what's going on, you know? And I, and I think of, you know, what you just laid out in terms of the housing and how that relates. I mean, that's, that's a, you know, a story for them with that tax.
Well, look, so a, a strong press is essential for a well-functioning democracy. I mean, we have to keep in mind, we have a representative democracy, which means that we. I mean, we have to keep in mind, we have a representative democracy, which means that we elect people to go do the policymaking for us. But that only works effectively if your policymakers are listening and engaged in the community. When we have abysmal voter turnout rates, like 20% or less, I mean, you're, that's a small number of people making a decision for the whole whatever county or district, whatever you're looking at. We need the press to help people be engaged because like we've talked about, people tend not to look at local politics or what's going on with your local policies. So if nobody's looking or noticing it, then that means they're probably not engaging a ton with their elected representatives, which is what we, which is what I'm aiming to be, is an elective representative that's visible and accessible. Because it's not just about what I want or what I think are good, good ideas, it's about what does the community want? What, what do people find important and how do you best represent that?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I, I said that maternal health and early childhood and then housing. And then, um, the reason returning citizens was, uh, in that social determinant education that, that I've, uh, trying to, uh, you know, just to further. But that was one of the first steps that really stood out is, uh, in, um, uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask you, can you talk about the ACEs score? And then in that go into returning citizens because, uh, through learning about the ACEs score, which you're gonna tell us about, I found out that, you know, returning citizens, a child with a, a one or more parents that, uh, with either parent being incarcerated, that combined with another ACEs score really did a, just a drastic reduction of likely expectancy and just much poorer health outcome. So, uh, if, uh, I'm sure you can say it a lot better than me, but you know what I'm getting at.
Well, let me get back to affordable housing, because I don't think I, I mean, touched on that enough. Uh, and affordable housing as a social determinant of health, really, everything starts with housing. If you don't have a place to lay your head at night, I mean, how are you expected to, I mean, be eating or taking care of yourself? Like, yeah, if you don't have a home, you're certainly not gonna be getting healthcare, uh, or engaging in any of the other things that are gonna affect your overall well-being. So we, as a county, are in and have been in, in affordable housing crisis and we absolutely need to do something about it. We have to act now. And if you look at some of the actions that our county has taken during COVID to try to help homeless individuals, which is necessary. I mean, we can't have people homeless without a place to go while this pandemic is occurring. It's expensive, but that's where that doing proactive preventative policy would be more helpful. Like, we want to make sure that people that are homeless, and we don't want to have people be homeless. And we want people that are currently homeless, homeless, we want to engage with them, get them services and get them housed. And so thinking about tying affordable housing back to our discussion earlier about Galt Village and the shopping center, uh, there are a number of policy tools that are available to us that we can use to be creative, uh, I mean, to get what we need for our communities. A few of them that I teach about in my classes are inclusive zoning, uh, community land trust and community benefits agreements. And I think that if we look at Galt Village Shopping Center, it may be too late with, to use some of those tools because it was already in motion, but also along with affordable housing. When we look at inclusive zoning as an example, inclusive zoning refers to the use of zoning ordinances uh, to guarantee that any housing development that's created, uh, includes a certain number, a certain percentage, uh, units for affordable housing. Individuals that are lower, medium income. I know there's been conversations about Galt Village becoming potentially a mixed-use, uh, space that's, you know, maybe businesses and housing. If that's what's gonna happen, we want to do some inclusive zoning there to make sure that people are able, uh, to afford to live there. Uh, and we would want to do that in other spots throughout the county, uh, in our effort to promote affordable housing. And we're looking at, um, community land trust, for example. So community land trust, you can kind of think of that as a situation where maybe a neighborhood or community group, uh, creates a nonprofit that then purchases a land, uh, and then in the home, and then they will sell the home to a low-income family. So then that low-income family is able to live in that home, purchase it at a very low rate, uh, generate some wealth. And then eventually when they want to sell the home, they have to sell the, there are stipulations around, they can sell the home, they have to sell the home to another low-income family. But this prevents gentrification and helps keep, uh, community strong because the community owns the land, not the home, but they own the land. So this keeps developers from coming in and slum lords from coming in, uh, from taking over things. And that's something, community land trust is something I've been thinking a lot about, uh, in a lot of the work that I do at Sugarbrook. Uh, my wife and I are deeply involved in our Sugarbrook, uh, Neighborhood Watch Group and planned a number of events that I'm happy to talk about later. But a while back, uh, me and a group of students at Habitat for Humanity, uh, were doing a, we were surveying Sugarbrook to see what kind of, uh, updates to the infrastructure and other neighborhood amenities people would want to see. And we ended up coming across, uh, a man that was, it appeared that he was driving back and forth between vacant homes. Uh, it turns out he was a landlord for those homes, so he owns, owns those homes. And, uh, one of my students approached him to ask him to do the survey. He became irate with the student, uh, told her, told the student, brandished a gun at the student, uh, and told her that you don't need to be out here trying to improve the community, there's nothing you can do to improve this community and this, and said, this is why I carry this. And he gestured towards his gun. And then after that, drove his car around, found the other people that were canvassing with me, including Habitat, and said something similar. And I bring this story up to say that in a lot of our communities, we have these people that are not in the community. They don't care about the community, yet they own these homes, they rent them out to people. It may be the only place that people that rent from them can afford to live, they don't maintain, the landlord is not maintaining it for these people and they have such negative feelings about the community. So we need, and then we try to trace back, and he traces back to an LLC out of state. I mean, so this is how ridiculous some of these things are, why we're seeing some of these challenges in our communities. Uh, and that made me think about community land trust as a way for our communities to take back, uh, our power and take back, uh, I mean, land that should be ours.
You know, um, that, that story surprisingly to some people is not surprising to me and like, I, I have a guess who you met. You know, I, I, but saying that, um, in this education that I've had, really paying attention to things locally, initially I was one that demonized landlords all the time. I'm a left-winger, all that. But I say that initially because getting to know, there's a spectrum. You have that terrible example that, that the guy, the, the guy that brandished the gun, but you have a lot of working-class people that purchase investments and they're on the margins too. And they care about the community. And I, I think there's a large segment, uh, 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 of those. And you have some incredible bad actors, you know, but we can ferret those out, but it just calls like, there's, there's partnership there with landlords i- i- in, in Ipsy Township. And, 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 and it's needed because, uh, of, you know, Mr. Gun Brandisher. You know, really, really. And I'll say that, like, uh, I just, uh, I spoke to someone that owns 20 properties in Ipsy Township. They own 10 in the West Willow area. And I know in those conversations, they're doing everything they can to keep those tenants, uh, in those, in those, uh, units, you know? And, you know, uh, he has a budget though, you know, he has business realities and employees, you know? So there's, uh, that connection is just something that there's not enough of. Community landlord, policy arena, getting together, and that's what we can do by, by cutting through everything.
Right.
You know?
And so affordable housing too is not just about, like, the housing itself needs to be affordable. I mean, people need to be making more money too. I mean, that's why, one of the things that I would do if I'm elected is to support strengthening our prevailing and living wage ordinances. I mean, people are just not making enough money and things are too expensive. And if you look at, I mean, look at the numbers, uh, the median household income in Ipsy Township is about $12,000 less than it is in the city of Ann Arbor. I mean, it's, which is just ridiculous, like, it's, there's so many disparities, uh, particularly in our part of the county versus Ann Arbor. And one of the reasons why the county commissioner has appointed me to the Community Action Board, which is a board that advises the commission and works with the, and the Office of Community Economic Development, uh, which, which exists to address these wealth inequities in our county. I mean, I have done the research on this, I mean, this is a lot of the, this kind of public services.
Hi, thanks for watching.
And this is why I've been working with the county for so long on these kinds of initiatives.
For about 20 more minutes, thank you.
Hey, uh, welcome back. We have about 20 more minutes left and, uh, I mentioned earlier, like, when I'm thinking about social determinants affecting health inequities in, in the county, I look at, uh, maternal health and early childhood, putting that together, housing. But, uh, what's really come on the map and I think is really important is returning citizens and just in general. And then in the county discussion, 48198, 48197, how much that impacts, how much that's, uh, involved in our county criminal justice system, huge disparity. So, um, can you give me some background or your thoughts about that, returning citizens in our county and how that affects the social determinants of health?
Yeah, I mean, so when you have served your time, uh, you should be able to come back into your community and be able to live your life, uh, and, and do, like, live your life. So we need to do, have more efforts in the county to promote, um, opportunities for returning citizens. I was part of a nonprofit with Melvin Parsons, his nonprofit, We the People Opportunity Center. Uh, I helped him launch that as president of his board and then stepped away once they were up and moving. Uh, and that's, the purpose of that, um, nonprofit is to provide opportunities for returning citizens. And we, we need more of that, we need more supports and services going to programming like that. I mean, if everyone in our community is not thriving, then our community is not thriving.
Who would you say if someone's, because I, you know, different organizations have contacted me trying to get an idea about the returning citizen population in, in this, in West Willow, Ipsy Township? And, you know, I don't know, I don't have a good resource or what are some resources for, for groups? And there's, especially out of COVID, you know, there's personal, people are just, uh, they're, they're really scrupulous with their donation dollars. They want to do something, they want to get involved and support things. So on the individual organizational level, um, for, for that person or group that wants to get involved, how would they, uh, best, uh, you know, try to, uh, support returning citizens in West Willow, Ipsy Township?
Yeah, I think a good first step would be to connect with United Way. So the United Way, uh, connects with a lot of these nonprofits and is, supports financially some of the nonprofits. Through my role on the Community Action Board, I was part of this, uh, grant review process, uh, through United Way where we looked at different nonprofits that were requesting funding. Uh, and there were several nonprofits that were requesting funding for, um, returning citizen programming. So there are several throughout the county, um, some in eastern Washtenaw, some in western. So I, I would say, starting with, uh, United Way would be a good start.
Alrighty, thanks, I'll definitely take, hey, you know, um, here on, being on the eastern part of the county and us having the border with Wayne.
Yeah.
I wonder, um, what, what is the, what's the nature of the relationship between Washtenaw and Wayne County Government? Is there one? Is there a lot of partnership, a lot of discussion? Cause we, we're kind of right in that mix, you know, I'm a Belleville 87, uh, which, I'm here in public schools, is rooted in Wayne County, but, you know, everybody, half of West Willow lives in Ipsy Township. So it, curious about that, what's that relationship like?
Well, so now you're gonna get me into this discussion about regional transit and how important that is for our region. So there's not as much collaboration between our county governments and, I mean, the region in general, as much as I would like to see. Uh, I mean, we saw that the last attempt on regional transit didn't work out. And if I'm elected, one of the things that I'm gonna be working on really hard is making sure that we can get regional transit, which for people not familiar with regional transit, it would be, uh, public transportation options within our county, but then around the region, which, and I say region because I can't specify which counties it will be because there's always some counties want to participate and some don't. But Wayne has always wanted, I think, to participate, uh, in a regional transit program with us. Uh, and because we are so close to them, I mean, it doesn't matter if you live or work in one place, you might, might live or work in the other one. Like, your job and your life doesn't know like the county border. So we do need, uh, a strong regional transit program.
Alright, alright.
I mean, we need that to support our economy too. I mean, if we look at the people, um, in, in Augusta Township and South Ipsy Township, uh, it's harder to find bus lines or there aren't bus lines and there's not as much access to, to transportation. So you can't have a job if you can't get to the job. I mean, we need to help people be able to get to jobs.
Abs- absolutely, I mean, uh, that, um, it was in the early 90s, the bus did not come out. There wasn't a bus line to West Willow or Sugarbrook. I remember that, so through my high school years, that, that period, you know, when people are entering the jo, the, the economy and, you know, they don't have a lot of skills at starter, there, there wasn't even, uh, access to it. You were, you were running downtown or getting dropped off downtown. But now we do have that, but that does, you know, if someone's starting 8:00 AM at University of Michigan and they live in West Willow, that's about three hours of transportation, about an hour and a half to get down there through bus. So that's just, uh, yeah, we need regional transport, we need more regional, and more routes or, or smarter ways. I know there's, that's not an easy nut to crack, but, uh.
We need that and we need more affordable housing. I mean, so that, like what you mentioned about that long commute that so many people have, and I mean, you know, I'm a professor at U of M and I'm driving there from Sugarbrook. Uh, it's not a terrible commute, uh, depending on traffic and how early I have to go. But really, long commutes are bad for people's mental health, I mean, that's what the studies show. So we wanna, we wanna reduce people's need to have commutes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, man, uh, we, we, we're gonna do this a lot. On camera and off, because there, there's so much, uh, to talk about. I, I propose like for addressing health inequities, my first thoughts were that, uh, maternal health, childhood development, housing, returning citizens. What am I missing or like if somebody posed to you without, before, prior to this interview, like, what are the three areas? Wouldn't you think, uh, or just what are your thoughts? I don't want to tie you in broad, you know where I'm going.
Yeah, well, you know, I think it's really hard to have any conversation about health without us talking about wealth and income disparities in here. So, I mean, I talked, touched on some of the income disparities between the Ann Arbor area and our part of the county. Uh, one of them that I hadn't mentioned, countywide, uh, the median household income for African-Americans is about half that for white families. That's ridiculous, like, we need to do something about that. If you can't, i- if your income is really low, it's harder for you to afford to eat. I mean, it's, that's why the work that I want to do about promoting economic development and addressing wealth disparities in our county is so essential to community well-being and people's health. People don't, one of the other wealth-related things that I want to do, uh, is related to predatory lending agencies. So people tend not to think about those and the detrimental effect that they have on our communities. But predatory lending agencies are those kinds of services, uh, that will give you an advance on your check, but then charge you an absurd interest rate that will just keep you perpetually in a cycle of debt. I've had family members that have been caught in this and it's just, you end up having to take like a payday loan from another payday lender to pay back the other one. Uh, and then the interest keeps skyrocketing and you have to keep paying it back and then your wages get garnished and then you're having a hard time paying your bills and getting food. So we need to take a more serious look at addressing predatory lending agencies. Uh, and that also includes when we're thinking about homeownership, people that have these high-interest mortgages. We need to tackle that. It's hard to come up with a, like a true solution to it because a true solution, I think we need to come from the state level, but we can do some creative things at the county level to reduce people's reliance on it. One of my ideas to do that is to partner with credit unions and get credit unions, uh, to provide low-to-no-interest, small loans to people for them to use that instead of engaging with a predatory lending agency. And also to create opportunities for them to, uh, people that are underbanked or unbanked to get connected to tradi- traditional financial services. Because, I mean, the research shows that you're able to be more financially healthy with those kinds of services.
You know, um, I, I'm getting excited, I think, I, I mentioned to you, uh, how West Willow is receiving some of the COVID aid from United Way that we're incredibly appreciative for. And, and, and it, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, uh, again, you were talking about these things prior to COVID. I was thinking about, uh, long-term, you know, we just don't want to put a Band-Aid on things. And I think, uh, with this COVID aid and, and West Willow, uh, we're definitely gonna have a financial education component.
Yeah, good.
Wondering what that was gonna look like, talking to you and if it's education about, uh, those predatory lenders. And I go from like, for rent to own to appliances, to also those, those, uh, you know, predatory, uh, lenders and finance companies that, you know, encourage people to refi their home four or five times or something and, you know, are so key to that, that transfer of wealth out of these vulnerable communities and perpetuate that multi-generational poverty and everything. So, yeah, educating about predatory lending and just, uh, that, that environment and how they're acting.
Yeah, I mean, that's extremely important. I've been involved in doing financial literacy trainings, uh, and the county is right now engaging in conversations about having, creating a financial empowerment center that would focus on those kinds of issues, getting people, uh, connected to traditional financial services and providing education. But see, why I mentioned earlier about how if we want to reduce people's reliance on predatory lending agencies, uh, and the credit union idea that I had, you have to, if you're gonna take something away, you have to provide an alternative. So the alternative to engaging, like, because people aren't true, like, they don't go to a predatory lending agency because they want to. They, they, what they want to do is be able to pay their bills and feed their families. And if that's the only option that's available to you, that's the option you're gonna take to take care of your family. So it's not like people are just making a poor choice, they're making the choice that's available to them, that they have to make. But we need to provide alternative choices that will in, increase financial health.
Yeah, I love, you know, I, my points were that, you know, that maternal health, housing, returning citizens, uh, yeah, wasn't missing, the money, people need money.
We need money, right?
People need a job, you know, and, and people need the education about what to do with that money, so that's great. I think, um, we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about the importance of, uh, of voting and getting registered. And, you know, the absentee ballot list, I think, you, sure, you can probably do it. And getting registered. And, you know, the absentee ballot list. I think, you sure, you can probably do it better than me. You're out there, whatever. You know, uh,
Yeah.
Yo, should I vote this year? Why? Locally?
You should vote every year. You should always vote. Uh, one of the things I talk a lot about in my classes is voting rights. Uh, and how people in our communities have had to fight to be able to have the right to vote or to be able to exercise that right. Uh, so at the very least, you should go for those reasons, but also because it's absolutely necessary for the strength of our democracy and for it to function correctly for you to engage civically. I mean, one of the, I'm a firm believer in government as a vehicle for creating positive social change. I mean, that's why I've worked to apply my, that's why I've always been in public service and I've worked to apply my expertise uh, to county government. I mean, I worked to get it appointed to these county boards. I also chair the Sheriff's Community Advisory Board where we focus on uh, community policing in, in ways in which we can make everybody safer. I mean, I, I have a commitment to this and, but there are other ways to be civically engaged. The, and one of the basic ways to do that is to vote. So make sure you vote, make sure you're looking up who these people are on your ballot. Like, these local people, yeah, everybody is paying attention to the national stuff, but these people at the local level are doing things that impact your day-to-day life tremendously. But one of the things I've been working on in Sugarbrook for a while is that on my street and several other streets throughout the neighborhood, there aren't curbs. And that's a really serious infrastructure problem. It hurts property values. Uh, and people speed down these streets too. So I've been working on trying to do something. Uh, and I collected dozens of signatures to get the roads commissioned to, they're gonna come out and do an assessment. I got a lot of, a lot of kids in my neighborhood and we get people flying down my street like 50, 60 miles an hour. Uh, these are local policymakers that are going to make these kinds of decisions. So if you care about the safety of the kids in, in your neighborhood, as well as your own safety, you need to be paying attention to what's going on uh, locally.
And that's key. I mean, that's what, you want someone uh, locally representing you that actually does care about the road commission or Parks and Recreation or something. And it's not just a vehicle for their career to get into politics and things. I mean, it's, it's really important. So yeah, absolutely study it, absolutely. And you know what, Kay, I said that I always paid attention to national, global. Uh, what brought me to paying attention to local so much is just studying what's going on around here and seeing that politicians and policymakers seem like they really paid attention to areas where people voted.
Yeah.
You know, so that's why, I mean, I want everyone in West Willow, Ipsy Township to vote, you know, because they, that's, you, that's how you get people to respond and then all those elections.
And you know, again, the research shows that communities that vote have better outcomes. They're, they report greater community wellbeing. There are a number of reasons, but one of the reasons being that elected officials are trying to get engagement from people that do vote so that they can stay in office. So those people that do vote are gonna get more access to services uh, and programs that make their community stronger. Now, something else that you mentioned though, that I wanted to touch on, is this idea about uh, people being in office that want to be in the office that they're in. Like, for example, I, I want to be county commissioner. I ran for county commissioner against uh, an incumbent with more than 30 years of name recognition last time. Knowing it was a long shot, but, but seeing that I think there were voids in some of the work that was being done that I thought I could provide my expertise to. And I'm running again uh, for those same reasons. And I know that some challenging things have happened with my race based on a new person that's gotten into it. Um, but that does not deter me from, it's just gonna make me work even harder.
New person, but same old politics.
Right. The same old politics won't get us anywhere. But another thing to be concerned about is that this particular seat uh, has been looked at, I think, by a lot of candidates or would-be candidates in two different ways. One, as a way to launch yourself into doing, running for state representative or some other office. Or as a nice place to retire from after having served in other offices. That's not at all what I'm looking to do. I'm looking, because we need someone that's gonna be a strong and consistent voice.
If I could, we cannot have that. I mean, and, and it, I mean, you, you were talking about these health inequities prior to COVID. COVID has highlighted it and exacerbated the need for them to be addressed. And if people aren't speaking to that and don't have a record of that, we, we can't have someone just sitting in that seat. It's too important now with what you've outlined. It goes to the health, the literal health of the people in that district. And so we gotta have somebody that's knowledgeable and cares about it.
And that wants to stick around. Like, the terms for county commissioners are two years. Uh, and, you know, people frequently will run for that and run for something else because their term is up or if it works out where they can run uh, in between terms. Uh, I'm ready to be here for the long haul. I mean, I've been doing this work as someone that's not elected. Um, but I think I can have a much greater impact as someone that is elected. And I, I think I can, I have been effective in leveraging resources as a professor uh, to work in my community, work in Sugarbrook. I've had a lot of students work with me in Sugarbrook. Uh, and the other thing too is you want somebody that's gonna be able to work effectively with other people. And people have, one of the lies or attacks against me is that, just to address it specifically, is that people think that I'm gonna be in the pocket of Ann Arbor politicians. I mean, that's a, it's exact thing that I've heard from people, which could not be further from the truth. I mean, if you look at my record and the things that I've done in Sugarbrook, I mean, between working on speed abatement and cur- infrastructure, uh, the variety of like activities that we've planned out here between me and my wife, who was uh, now our Neighborhood Watch Coordinator. Uh, Sugarbrook Summer Bash, more than 250 residents came to that. Uh, Sugarbrook Holiday Party, like, we have been working out here for years.
You know, you, you don't need this, but the, we did, to add to the ridiculousness of that statement is, from my view, uh, the, well, I spoke with the township representative and I, I'll use the accent of people who know, who it is. Uh, they use our numbers and take the money. That's what, that's what uh, this township representative is. So, uh, I was thinking when that township representative said that, you know, that how come you're not there advocating? So the, the current structure is, you know, Ann Arbor's deciding that, how that money is distributed with an ignorance about what goes on out here and you're fighting against that.
Right.
You're, you're trying to jump in and change that, you know, so that's why, you know, people need to be informed instead of just, you know, just spouting off about things if they don't have any facts or, you know, some evidence of it.
Right. And I have the support that I do from six of the county commissioners and many other people, including Sheriff Clayton. Because leaders see other leaders and they're familiar with my work, they're familiar with the things that my opponents have done. And they know that I will be a powerful voice and advocate to be able to help improve our county. I mean, that's, that's why I have the support that I have. People have seen the work that I've been doing.
You know, and this is uh, just uh, I uh, I can't wait to work more with the Sheriff's Department and law enforcement in the community spectrum. Uh, in the political world, we, we have it. You know, I think there's a bit of overreach, but, but we lead overreach. I know there's a bit of overreach. But the importance of public safety and working in the community, there's a, I, I, I mean, I, I, we have to have that. Uh, so I, I just, uh, because you, you, the, the leaders, I mean, I think, um, I really think that's, I like to see our health department and all these people with more of an approci- appreciation for the social determinants of health that don't have to look through the law enforcement perspective. I like to see them having more, being, having a, 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 more, more seats at the table and being part of the county discussion. But uh, yeah, you, you have a, a wide array of people behind you that, that recognize what you bring to the table.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, anything else before we uh, take off? Any events coming up? Well, we're all in the house. You got any Zooms coming up? Or how should people just go to your website or?
Yeah, you can learn more about what we're doing at votejustinhodge.com. We're also on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter, all at votejustinhodge.com. Uh, we're hoping to have some Zoom activities soon. You'll be able to learn about those there. But other than that, we're just gonna be at home uh, continuing to do work, working uh, you may have seen already on social media that I've been out uh, distributing care packages in West Willow and Sugarbrook. We're hoping to continue doing that. I think we're gonna get another one scheduled uh, within the next week or so. Uh, but that's, I'm gonna try to be out, but in, you know, social distancing, but we'll be distributing all resources to the neighborhoods that need them. Uh, one of the things I forgot to mention is that we have a lending library at our home uh, for kids to come get books from. And which, since kids are not able to go to school, we've been keeping that stocked with uh, like math and other like language workbooks, as well as just other books. I mean, that'll be available. Uh, we're also working to get some uh, like mobile food pantries that will try to put, we have three of those lending libraries in Sugarbrook. We're uh, hoping to put one of those mobile food pantries uh, with each of those lending libraries. But you'll be able to see when, when we're able to make that happen uh, soon on VR social media. And keep an eye on the website because I'm gonna be updating that soon with a variety of COVID-19 resources, uh, including how do you get access to your stimulus check if you haven't received it yet, and a variety of other tools. But I hope what I've been able to convey in this discussion, which I appreciate you having with me, is that what my campaign is about is creating a Washington County where your race, ethnicity and socioeconomic status don't determine your destiny. And I need your support to make that happen. So uh, I'm asking for your vote on August 4th or before. If you vote absentee, please vote absentee so you don't have to go out. Uh, but that's the kind of Washington County that I've been working for, for years. Uh, and the one that I will fight to make happen as county commissioner.
And it's the one that I want and that's why I'm gonna be voting for you. Thank you, everybody. Come back next week. Uh, see uh, my next guest on Alex Thomas Show. Stay safe.